Committee meeting. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Rob Mullin, school committee member.
Good evening, Mike Moran, school committee member.
Good evening, Mark Branko, assistant superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Costucci.
Anthony Tenerola.
Jeff Klow.
Joe Messina, business administrator.
Nolan from the finance committee.
Billy Crawford, finance committee.
Please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the April 5th, 2021 Negotiation Subcommittee Executive Session Meeting Minutes, April 12th, 2021, Tri-Board Meeting Minutes, April 13th, 2021 Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, April 13th, 2021, School Committee Meeting Minutes, and the April 13th, 2021 Executive Session Meeting Minutes. The executive session meeting minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. Thank you. Correspondence?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. Natalie's not with us tonight, so we will pass on Share the Success. Subcommittee update. Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee met tonight. We presented the evaluation to Dr. Flanagan. He has two weeks to review it and respond, and we will go from there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, question?
Yes.
I didn't know if Mr. Flanagan, you want an update from the meeting that we had for the Capital Asset Committee the other evening?
Absolutely.
I know it's not on the -- okay, thank you. What did we meet?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday, thanks, reminder. Capital Asset Committee met last Thursday evening. The determination -- oh, sorry. After going through all the requests from all the different departments in town, and after evaluating them and getting feedback from the Finance Department within the Town Hall, it was determined that we did have enough funding in various ways to fund the entire request from all different departments. For the school board, the school requests, to remind you what those were, that was the new truck for the facilities department. That was the elevator repairs here in this building, and that also included the repair work for the tennis courts.
Excellent.
So all three items were approved to forward to a meeting with school, with the -- I'm sorry, with the Board Selectmen, where they would put in their recommendations. So the Finance Committee will see those as well at some point, and put in their recommendations as well, and to place that on the warrant item to go to town.
We'll be reviewing those for the first time on Thursday evening.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I could just add that Mr. Messina and I sit there as window dressing, but Mr. Mullin and Mr. Tenerola do a great job each and every year advocating for the schools, so I thank you for their work.
Thank you, everybody involved. Personnel. Notification of request for maternity leave. Tara Shannon Clark, TES paraprofessional. Start date, June 3rd, 2021. Notification of request for maternity leave. Fallon Fantasia, TES paraprofessional. Expected start date, May 8th, 2021. And we have a notice, notification of resignation, TES teacher Jessica Monroe with 19-plus years of service. Good luck, Jessica. Unfinished business. TPS COVID-19 update. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll jump right into our slide deck at this point. I like to start with traditional slides, so everyone knows what the pulse is in the school. As of 6:27 this morning, we have four active cases in our school district. One at the elementary, two at the middle, and one at the high school. As of 6:27 this morning, we received no reports this afternoon, so that is the most current information we have. We go to the next slide. We like to show this slide each week as well, just to kind of show where we are trending as a community. Our last report last Thursday night was we had 3.49% positivity rate in Tinsborough. We have 34 active cases in the past 14 days. We like to see the trend from the red to the yellow, and I hope to get it to green pretty soon. It's reflective of what's going on in our community, and I think it's a good data point that we've assessed all year long. So, I know you like to add, I don't know about this, you talk about this yearly COVID meeting as well.
So the magic number is 16 over the last two weeks. And you can see on 318, the last time we were in the green, we had 16 over the previous two weeks, so we're getting there. We're on the right track.
Excellent. Next slide. This is a slide we added within the past month or so, month and a half. Weekly quarantine data. As you can see, snapshot of time. This is not cumulative for a week. This is a moment in time. Last Friday, we had seven students in quarantine at TES, zero at TMS, and 14 at THS. Again, those numbers are very positive. Actually, we anticipate those numbers to continue to be good, particularly when we start talking about the next slide, with close contacts being now in the school. So, for those of you who aren't aware, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education worked with MassDPH, and they revised the close contact guidance. That being said, what they're saying now for school districts is, any student that is within three feet is still a close contact. However, three to six feet, it's the obligation of the school department to notify the parents that they were within six feet, and the parents have the decision to make whether they want to quarantine their child or not. They're no longer obligated by mass regulations to quarantine beyond three feet. So, that is a game changer for the schools, particularly in terms of our classroom setups as well as our bus. You go to the next slide, please. So what does that mean? That means we will never have a close contact in school at TES and TMS. Now, what happens after school, before school, there may be a close contact, but our desks are six feet apart everywhere, TES and TMS, and we don't have any extended periods where the kids are within close contact for one of 15 minutes. At THS, we have potential close contacts between the four and six feet because not all of our rooms are six by six. That being said, it will be the parents' choice to quarantine at that point. So what we can say cumulative for all three schools is, no student in a classroom setting will be mandated to quarantine as a result of school setups for in-school classes. In terms of buses, it's a little bit different. Buses, we still have potential close contacts on all of our routes, given that three-foot range. So our practice going forward is going to be this. If you are a close contact that needs to quarantine, our nurses will still call you as a family. If you are a potential close contact, and it's your decision, those families will receive an email from our nurse. Our nurses are doing a lot of work in time contact tracing. It's just we're going to put the onus on the parents at that point, to make a family decision at that point. And if they have any questions, certainly they can reach out to our nurse. If we go next slide, we're going to see a little impact on the bus. As you recall, this is what our bus diagram looked like. So the student in yellow impacted every student around him in green as a close contact. At the bottom, the student on aisle seat in yellow impacted everyone in a blue seat as a potential close contact. That was the old diagram of six feet. This guidance changed in the middle of April vacation. It was in place the past week. So go to the next slide, please. This is what it looks like now. Just for point of clarification as well, you can see on the diagram that we put three seats on every bench. On no bus, and that's why we only did that because that's how D-Bus labels their seats. We don't have three students on any bench seats. So that entire middle row on each one of those is out. So the big number to take away is, the close contact on the green, at six feet, we impacted 13 students. At three feet, we impact five students. Game changer for the buses. Absolute game changer. Blue seats, at six-feet distance, we close contact 15 kids, and at three feet, it's down to six kids. So this has made our life a lot easier, the nurses' lives for sure, a lot easier in terms of contact tracing. We still have to find out who's within the six-foot radius, we send them an email. But in terms of mandating quarantine for students, we're in much better shape because of three feet. So we'll go to the next part. So that's where we are with COVID. That's the update. We're in a very good spot. Our teachers are doing a great job. Our administration is doing a great job. The kids are doing a fantastic job. They really are. They're wearing their masks. They know what they need to do, and we're in a really good spot right now. So very happy, pleased with what we've seen.
Before we move on, Mike, at our COVID meeting this week, head nurse Michelle Riley asked me to, you know, stress any points of still maintaining six-feet social distance outside of the classroom. The reason we're able to go to three feet in the classrooms is because there's teachers there to enforce social distancing, mask-wearing, hand washing, all these additional mitigation strategies to reduce the potential transmission of COVID. Outside of school, you know, it's not as rigorous, so that's why we need to still maintain the six feet.
Great point. And if I can just add to that, I know that there's been discussion about the outdoor mask mandate, and could kids take their masks off at phys ed at recess? They cannot. The guidance is clear, unless you can ensure and guarantee social distancing, which you cannot do in a school setting. You can't do it at recess. You can't do it at phys ed. So because we cannot guarantee it, students still need to wear their masks outside. Just point of clarification, just to make sure that was updated. Any questions about COVID before we move on? So FY22 budget presentation. Before I turn it over to Mr. Messina, I just want to remind folks where we are. On March 23rd, this school committee adopted or approved an initial budget request of $788,000, variance from last year to this year. Since that time, Mr. Messina and I had an opportunity to meet with Town Minister Matt Hansen and Finance Director Dave Andrews at the Town Hall. We had a very productive meeting over there. As this committee is aware, when we went to our tri-board meeting two weeks ago, there was discussion about potential canvas money, and a portion of that coming to the schools for a wellness position or something along those lines. Mr. Messina is going to present a great working document, and I just want to thank and commend Town Minister Hanson and Dave Andrews from the Town Finance Department. We have a great relationship, and it was a very productive meeting. And I think we all recognize each other's needs, and we try to present a conservative but responsible budget every year. And if I go back four years, our staffing pattern was 21 more employees than we have today, or about 21 more employees than we have today. So we've been fiscally responsible this entire time, and that a large part due to the great working relationship we have with the town, so I would like to thank them. So Mr. Messina, I'm going to throw the ball to you at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So in this version of the budget, version 1.1, essentially there are six new lines, primarily revenue lines, and two expense lines. So the first thing that we didn't have a very good handle on at the end of March was what a summer learning academy may look like in terms of costs. Dr. Branko's been peppering parents about what our intention is and what it may look like. We have a rough estimate of that figure at $90,000. That was added into your budget. This also includes sort of an enhancement of our ESY offering, includes a transportation element that isn't necessarily there in the past. But, you know, your budget is always unique, and moves from second to second can vary. Certainly throwing COVID into the mix and trying to present a summer programming, knowing some of the issues that we've encountered throughout this year, gets very interesting to try it for the first time. So we don't think this is something that you'll see go away with this budget. Probably we'll have a little more enhancement as we move into FY23 on the budget. Next line is the addition of Town Cares revenue. Again, Dr. Flanagan, myself met with Matt Hansen and Dave Andrews to go over some of the more unique expenses in this budget, and they agreed to provide us with some $256,000 of care money to supplement this budget request. As Dr. Flanagan mentioned at the tri-board, there was talk about providing some of the host agreement revenue to the schools. We added that line for $65,000. Part of that host agreement included health curriculum stipends of $10,000. That's been added into Dr. Branko's teaching and learning line item. We also recognize that our fixed costs for out-of-district tuitions have been rising, and most likely we may need to hit the sped stabilization account. Currently has a balance of $89,000, so we included that in your budget as a revenue line. And then between March 23rd and tonight, we did get another check to host a foreign exchange student for next year, so we added that $7,500 of revenue into your budget, and we hope we can host them come the fall. So, next slide, Mark. The next two slides are basically the two-page of your budget. Expenses in the first line and revenues in the second. And I would point out that the revenue lines in gold on the next slide, Mark, that still represents this year's budget. A little further down. That still represents this year's budget of $20,178,601. But if you look at that final number, this budget represents an increase of $470,000 and change to your budget. So the current school committee budget at this moment is $21,649,097. And that's a 2.2% increase from this year's budget. The last page on this budget is just a brief understanding of what that $256,000 of revenue will be used for in this budget, as well as what the $65,000 for the host agreement funding will cover. Again, we mentioned the summer learning academy and the enhanced ESY. We also have an increase in one of our contracted service providers for behavioral services for 22,000. And the last three numbers, the hardware enhancement, the upgrades in the internet and firewall, as well as the hardware replacement cycle, all stemmed from our discoveries after the DDoS attack on this campus back in October. Mr. Piper has worked very hard to identify our weaknesses in our structure and looks to isolate those and correct them. And one of them was the understanding that when students bring their own devices to school, it opens up our network for attack. So this hardware replacement cycle begins a four-year, one-to-one program, where we'll work towards one-to-ones for all students using our computers rather than bringing their own devices. So that was just a summary that we wanted to share with both the school committee as well as Matt Hansen as to what items in this budget will be funded by these two different funding pools that are new to us. Everything else is pretty much what you've seen.
Before we move off this, the internet upgrade, firewall replacement, does that include the elementary school?
Yes.
Upgrade?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Another question, I guess, is one that's probably more for Dr. Branko. Do we need to revisit the BYOD policy?
Yeah. Yeah, we absolutely do. So when we need this to go through the budget process, once it's formalized and we know that we can move forward with this, then we'll sit down, we'll look at that policy. The difference between a cell phone and a $3,000 computer and whether or not we're going to allow students to sign in with certain access, we will still have high school students that take certain classes that are going to require hiring machines, whether they're engineers, designers, programmers, or the like. So we want to have a pathway for specific machines to be able to come in and be tracked and signed in appropriately, but not as free as it's been before. So yeah, we'll have to take a look at that policy over the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is there something to do with the government on this CARES Act funding? Is that what that's all about?
Joe?
So the CARES Act funding is the -- it's the first round of monies that came out of the whole COVID funding that was given to the town, I want to say probably December, January timeframe. Actually, probably a little earlier than that, I would say late fall. Well, the town got approximately $1 million. And again, as the superintendent mentioned, we've been working very closely with Matt and with Dave Andrews to identify items that qualify for that because they were not anticipated budget costs, and they're happening because of the pandemic.
Right now, with the $1 million that was allocated, what portion has the school committee, the committee, the school building, and so forth, what portion of that has been -- is that the portion that will follow? Or what is exactly that makes up a million dollars in conjunction with the municipal? You'd have to ask the town accountant about that.
So specific to items already expended, you'd have to go to the town accountant. But the town accountant and the town administrator have identified $256,000 towards this budget, which begins on July 1.
So that's the answer? $256,000 so far for schools?
That's the FY22 number, not anything that's been spent.
That's correct. That's what I was looking for. But a million dollars right now, the school committee has $256,000 allocated so far.
For next year. Money has been spent between the town and the schools already in FY20 and '21.
Any further questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Messina. Great job, as always.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a question. Will we be able to get copies of that?
Yes.
The presentation we just received?
Yes.
But that's how we would ask. I'd like to have those to take to my meeting on Thursday evening. Might I have them off at the administration office or something?
We can PDF them and email them to you tomorrow. Does that work?
We can't get a copy tonight? No, yes, I don't know.
Yeah, it's online tonight. If you want to go, yeah, sure.
Would you please send me, is that what you got there?
It's available on our website, under School Committee. You go down to Member Resources, and all our information's out there, the night of the meeting. It goes on live 10 minutes before every meeting. So you can get it tonight, or I can email you a copy tomorrow.
Could you please maybe email me?
Great. Absolutely. We'll do.
PDF it, please.
No worries.
I know you found them. It took me two hours to find them. Be honest with you, Google Drive. I haven't been able to find them. People are finding them everywhere.
Okay.
So Dr. Flanagan will send them out in the morning, and you guys will be all set.
I'll be at 6 o'clock this morning.
You'll mail your PDF tonight, tomorrow morning.
But I did save the bookmark, so next time I can find it.
Perfect.
Look, it's a PDF me anyway.
Excellent.
Okay. So we can't have a hot coffee tonight? No.
No.
You can't. Have any approval? No, we can't. Okay. It's not available. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Just one more thing. The town librarian, the lady co-author who came here nine years ago, she didn't receive a copy of this yet. The March 23rd now, no reference to May 5th approved budget, okay? We're having trouble finding the mark. What does it tell the people which one is it? We're having trouble finding the March 23rd. Our whole dilemma was, we didn't realize that March 23rd, there was an initial budget even available. Right. That was our whole dilemma, Mr. Ross. We didn't know that was even available. And that was it. So, I mean, in the future, maybe someone could alert the Finance Committee it was done or something. But we didn't know it was even available.
Okay.
That was our whole problem, okay?
Understood.
Thank you so much.
It's already been sent. You just got it.
Have a great night, gentlemen.
Good night.
Thank you for coming.
So, Mr. Chair, on a new business, I have nine school committee meeting scheduled. I put up our current meeting schedule now through the summer. I believe, given the fact that we have a shift in the elections, and the town election will be on June 15th, this kind of throws off our original plan. So I think it makes sense to add an additional meeting for the school committee, a regular meeting after June 15th. So I would just like to propose that we come together again on June 29th for another re-up meeting, potentially.
Makes sense to me. We'll seek a motion to add that meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0.
I'd also like to add that our June 1st meeting, if we go to the next slide, our June 1st meeting, you can see that that will also be the public hearing on the budget on the June 1st meeting. And I believe, Mr. Messina, we need to vote tonight on that?
Yes. Thank you. That's --
So we'll get to you in one second.
Okay.
So upcoming school committee and subcommittee meeting schedule. There's a lot on here.
Yeah.
It's a busy month. Between school building committee, school committee negotiations, we're going to see a lot of each other over the next month or so. So congratulations.
Mr. Chair, should we be voting to approve the revised budget?
That's where Mr. Messina was going.
I was waving at the superintendent. We're going to include it as part of finance, so.
So really, that's all we have left of the slide deck. I just wanted to put the upcoming meeting schedule out there so we can go back to Mr. Messina at this point. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. So absent of any more questions on version 1.1 of the FY22 budget, I was hoping the committee would vote to accept that as your current budget for FY22, and we will use that for the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to accept version 1.1 of the budget.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. Show your hard work on that, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're back to you for finance.
Excellent. So it was a little more confusing down at this end of the table tonight, so. For signing of bills, there were 11 bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. Signing of payroll, nothing tonight. We'll do catch-up at your next meeting on the 18th. And lastly, I do want to speak briefly about what Mr. Tenerola asked about the solar panels that I shared with the committee, but I also have it here tonight. Dr. Branko, can you put up the roof PDF?
The photo?
Yes, please. So in case anybody hasn't seen the actual roof of the high school, this is what the solar array looks like on top of the building.
That's awesome.
The photo must be fall of 2020 because our tents are up, so it looks like a relatively recent picture. So that is what the solar panels take up on the roof. You pretty much utilize the entire high school roof on that. And then in the drive mark is the actual list of all of the solar that's being produced out of that. The first column is just the kilowatt hours being produced by your solar panels and what we pay for energy on those panels, which is 9.8 cents per kilowatt hour. The second column is what the high school is paying for electricity brought in by National Grid. The provider is Constellation New Energy through our contract with Power Options. We pay about 9.1 cents to buy that electricity, but the rest of the cost is what National Grid charges us to bring that into the buildings. And you can see what the cost per kilowatt hour is on that National Grid bill on a monthly basis. It varies from month to month because they charge two different rates, one for peak, one for off-peak, and they have a number of additional charges, what they charge you to bring it into the building. So based upon that cost per kilowatt hour, I basically did a calculation to show the energy that the solar panels produce, what would have costed us to bring it into -- energy that the solar panels produce, what would have costed us to bring it into the building through National Grid. And you can see right up through last month, the total savings is a little under $50,000. It's $49,570. Average is about $25,000 per, actually, it's going to be probably closer to $30,000 for the fiscal year, once May and June get in there. You can see the total kilowatt hours for the building, as well as what percent of electricity is being generated by your solar panels. So, it's sized to, depending upon the time of year, about 75 to 80 on sunny. You get down to February, we only manage 6% for solar, but you can see it's saving you some money, and certainly hopeful that we can get the approval at town meeting to go forward beyond just the high school. Certainly looking at both the elementary and the Lakeview School, and then hopefully in the future, a new middle school building.
Excellent. Somebody have any questions on this?
I'd just like to say thank you, Joe, for bringing that information forward for us.
Welcome.
I think it's important to show the cost savings, and taxpayers approved it, and it's paying for itself, so, thank you. And I look forward to doing this on the elementary school if we can. We also have the fields out there that are not being used as you drive through. I don't know if there's anywhere over there we could put solar panels, but every little bit helps.
Yeah? All right. School committee discussion. Mr. Mullen?
I have nothing to say, Mr. Flanagan. I'm good, thank you.
All set, thank you.
Mr. Messina?
I am all set, thank you.
All set, thank you.
It is teacher appreciation week, so I'd like to let them know that this committee truly appreciates them, or at least I do on this committee. So, thank you to our teachers, our staff, to our nurses who continue to work hard, get us through this COVID stuff. One month today for our seniors, and they will be graduating, so enjoy it. And that is it. Thank you.
Two things, I just want to piggyback on what you said. I agree. I appreciate them too. And it's definitely been such a challenging year for everybody, but we always appreciate them. And also, with the seniors, it's just good looking forward to all the things that we're able to do this year, and I know all the seniors are very excited for it, so personally know that.
I just want to thank town hall, specifically Matt and Dave, for working with us on the budget. The budget cycle is never easy, so that partnership is very much appreciated, as well as the partnership with the other boards in town, so thanks.
So, we have excited seniors, and we also have relieved seniors because, as you know, May 1st is College Decision Day, so that's in their rearview mirror, so they've all made their decision over the past week or so, so that's good. Congratulations to them. Certainly thank you and recognize our teachers for teacher appreciation week. They've done a phenomenal job all year. Perseverance, they're living it right now. They're doing a great job. The other thing I just want to put out there is, beginning Thursday, we will start to flood social media with information about a community information night for the following Wednesday night. May 12th, there will be a community information night around the Tingsboro Middle School Building Project. So, our OP on left field and our design team from J CJ will be hosting a community information night on May 12th at TES at 6:30, but we'll flood social media with that event this week.
Excellent. I want to thank Chair Crawford and Mr. Mullen from the finance committee for joining us tonight. It's always good to work with those guys. I also want to thank Dr. Flanagan for the amount of extracurricular meetings he's putting in this month. I think he's out three additional nights each week this month, so.
My wife's very happy.
And as always, to Tony's point, thank you to the teachers. It's good to highlight them this week, but we appreciate them all year long also. We do have a need for executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We will return from the executive session only to adjourn the regular session meeting. This action requires a roll call vote. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mullen?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
That carries 7-0-0. We are in executive session. Have a good night, everybody.